Well, now we're going to start our work session. Today is September 25th. It's Monday 1:32 PM. We'll begin this discussion this morning with an approval of minutes. Held on September 18th. I'm Commissioner Gage Forrester. With me is Commissioner Sharon Ballows and Commissioner Jim Harvey. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motions carried. Minutes are approved. Let's go to our next agenda item. Which is a discussion regarding JDC Ranch subdivision review. I thought we had this out of our hair. What's this doing back in front of us?
We're here to start construction.
I can speak to that a little bit, Commissioner.
Alright, let's hear it. I've already got some phone calls, okay.
So, the planning commission just granted preliminary approval of the first phase, I guess the first couple of phases. Of the project that Nielsen Holmes recently submitted. And we wanted to just put this on your radar. The development agreement says that you'll actually see the preliminary plan. And you'll actually have a chance to approve it.
Okay.
Initially, we set this up to find out if you wanted to do that in a work session, but as we read the development agreement, it sounds like we should probably do that just in regular. Commission meeting. And so we'll put that on your agenda on the next possible meeting.
Okay.
Next couple of weeks. I just wanted to give you a heads up that you'll be seeing where you normally wouldn't be looking at a preliminary plan. You will be here. But also, I think the developers team, and I know Dave. Had a few things that he maybe wanted to show you as well, but we just wanted to put that on your radar. But the planning commission last week did, did, did give a preliminary approval.
Yeah, first question. So what, they got approval of the planning commission?
Yeah, and it's a cluster, single-family lots and also a. There's also a portion of the project that is attached patio homes.
Okay.
Hundred and seventy-five lots.
Okay.
There's a two and a half roughly, um, two and a half acre park. Is that right, Steve? And we're excited to get going on that. If you remember in the development agreement, the park improvements had to be done consistently with the development, a number of building permits being pulled. So this first park will be, will be building this right out of the shoots.
Okay.
So we're excited to get going with that. Uh, we will be building sixty-four smaller lot, single-family. So I think it's a product type that's sorely needed. Um, out there kind of in the Plain City, Far West area. And then, um, we'll have a hundred and eight attached patios. So we are partnering with Leisure Villas. This is Dave Erickson.
Okay.
Um, and so we're partnering with, with, uh, with Dave on this, on this to get these processed simultaneously. And then he'll move forward on his hundred and eight attached patios in our first phase. We'll move forward on, on our, our single-family detached.
Yeah.
So Dave, I think you had some information maybe you'd like to share.
Uh, you should have received it. You emailed out.
No, I'm sorry.
Well, I have, I have printed just one, but basically I'll just introduce who we are. Uh, you, we're the largest developer of, uh, fifty-five plus communities on the Los Hatch Fund. Uh, our closest two projects, we just finished, well, not be maybe aware of it, up on twenty-seven hundred North and North Ogden, next to the, uh, barn golf course. This project will be very similar to that. And maybe tweak the outside elements. We tend to do that on each new project. Uh, they're all restricted to folks fifty-five plus. Uh, we've built over two thousand of these homes from North, North Logan to Springville. Uh, we don't know much, but we do know how to, how to do this. They're nice. They're, uh, it's a PUD-type project, big clubhouse. Um, that's our Syracuse project clubhouse. Out off behind Smiths off of Antelope and one thousand west. Uh, they're just geared to what, what folks fifty-five plus are looking for, single level, no stairs. Like I said, big clubhouse, pool, theater, uh, party room, exercise facility. We've just been dialing them in over the last couple of decades and we're excited to be here. We know this market has definitely got a lot more grandparents looking to, to move. Uh, out of their homes that are power them on the lawn into what we do. We're excited to join up with Nielsen and be a part of this.
Okay, great. What's your time schedule?
Start building?
Yeah, to start construction.
So we are.
Hold permits or whatever.
Yeah, we're hope, we're hoping we can have a pre-con here probably in October, beginning of November.
Okay.
And then start, start construction here just as quickly as we can. We'd like to be building homes out there this spring.
Okay, you're gonna have to structure all in the ground already?
Um, it will be.
Okay.
Everything we need to connect to, I mean, we know where all of our connection points are. We've got, um, sewer, water, secondary water, storm drain. Everything's there, so.
Plan is we'll be coming in from the west, while they're coming in from the south.
Okay.
Connect up with the main, main road through the project. It's pretty slick, frankly. It's a real. Kind of solid plan. We'll be probably using the same contractor on both their stuff and our stuff works out. Um, but yeah, we'd like to get a, a vertical since we can get asphalt in in the spring.
Good. So I'm assuming you're not going into Plain City, or is that still on the table?
I would say it's never not on the table, Gage. But, um, but, uh, yeah, it's always on the table. We're always up for a conversation.
Okay. But no, uh, conversations positive to annex yet?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, we've had conversations recently with Far West. Uh, it's been a little while since we've spoken with Plain City, but you know, we're, we as the developer are willing to have those conversations whenever they would like to.
Thank you. All right, questions, Commissioners? Art Hall. Steve, anybody else? Rick, any questions on this or? So this is just informational. You'll be coming to, uh, the commission.
Yeah.
To present, to present the preliminary.
Yep. And then after that, the development agreement says that it's an administrative in-house and the planning director will approve the final plans from there.
Right, okay. All right, makes sense.
Going forward, because we will have another, uh, preliminary coming in here, I would say in another couple of months. Um, is it appropriate to get these done here, or do you want us always going to the public meeting if you have preference?
Well, I'd rather have you come here first, even if it's just ten or fifteen minutes, in case there's any questions come up.
Okay.
I just do not air those in a public, you know, in a commission meeting. Take the time if we don't need to.
Makes sense.
So.
But we do, but we do like the public to be able to comment.
Yeah, I, no, we, they can still comment here, or they could comment. You still have two meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just don't want to waste your time here if you're staying. Why are you here? Just go.
Oh, we've got more time than, you know.
We know what to do with it.
We have time to burn, so.
Well, your first question was, why are you here? Aren't you building stuff yet? So I just wanted to be sensitive to that.
No, I appreciate that. Now, I think this is a good time if we have any questions or get them answered here, so that you're prepared during the public session. I just do not bring it up there and then have to have you come back again.
Yeah.
If there's questions.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it. Anything else, Steve?
That should be it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming, guys.
Thanks, guys. Nice to meet you. Thanks for the lunch.
Yeah.
All right, the two PM discussion regarding 12th Street Water Line Cost Share has been canceled. Is that right?
It has been, yes.
But we are going to move on to, soon as Gary shows up again.
Yeah.
To the depot drive alternative. We might.
Happy day.
We might be out of here in a good time.
So I'm still going to the sheriff's office tonight, so.
You are?
Yeah, he has an open house. I gotta go support him.
On the bond?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, if you need to bump up our three thirty meeting.
We do.
Three.
Oh.
I can easily do that. It's just, uh, showing you the slides for the valley meeting.
Yeah.
We have three with, with. Brooke?
I've got a three thirty.
A three thirty.
Wait, I got a three o'clock with Brooke, so can we do?
Cause I think we have it at three thirty and however you want to do it.
We've got it at three, so we have Brooke Stewart, yeah, Brooke at three. So I might move you up to, how about if we move you to two thirty?
Yeah, for sure.
I think we'll be through here. Hey, Christie? Why don't we move you to two thirty?
Christie, if you're listening.
I'll just have Christie call you when I get out.
I'll go chat with her.
Will you tell her, her to also have Lee and Keel come up at the same time you're coming up, cause Lee is meeting with me while you're meeting with Gage.
Okay. Are you involved in the powder mountain discussion?
I'm not, but I know something about that.
Okay.
So I, I talked to Bob Barrett last week. So.
I'm assuming it's about ARCA funding.
Correct.
Okay.
We love. You know, I think that Ryan Rogers should show his face if he's gonna represent officially Taylor West Weaver Water instead of hide behind that screen. You got muted. Oh, no, you're good. He is. No, I'm not muted. You're not hidden either. No. Got my face shown here. He may not be sitting in his phone. Oh, he was. I just sent him a text.
Oh, okay.
He sent me a picture.
You there?
There he is. See, he's still on your camera, you city.
Well, you sent me a picture of you.
Large fry. That's right. I did. You're right. There he is.
No.
I lost you for a minute. Uh, no.
Yeah, we lost.
We're just wondering about the 12th Street Water Line, what was going on with that, but it sounds like you canceled that.
We, we did cancel it. We're running just a hair behind schedule on that, Ryan, so, um, we didn't get our plans from the designer until Thursday. And so they have not had a chance to process the elevations of everything to see what the impact of their facilities is gonna be. So they asked, they asked for a little bit more time to, to process the plans before we talk about the agreement on that.
I see, okay.
You're welcome to give me a shout later if you'd like, Ryan. I'm happy to walk you through where everything works out.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Good talking to you, man. See ya.
Talk to you later.
Yeah, the next one is out there. At two, at two. Oh, really?
We don't have one till two, really?
Really?
We're not downstairs. The only times that are printed on the agenda are ours.
Well, can I go downstairs for a minute or?
We're gonna start the rest, but still, we're not back.
So you're the boss of me?
Well.
Well, I guess now, cause I'm.
I guess I asked you.
All the miss, all the, all the meetings have been moved up. They asked for them all to be moved up.
Okay.
So.
I was just wondering if I just went down.
And then three o'clock. We'll be at two.
So one thirty end it early, next one's at two.
Next one, we'll be back.
All right, fine. Okay, fine. Same time, Rick, Grover, Tom, I want Lee and the students were done.
Okay. With the work session.
Soon as we're done with work.
Right.
Get down for fifteen minutes. I don't know what I get done in fifteen minutes, so. I'm, I'm here now for fifteen minutes. Looking through the budget. So, when we do your budget tomorrow?
Yes.
It's not just engineering. We're, we're talking through stormwater, we're talking through several of the impact fees and sewer.
Yep.
So, and flood control.
Okay.
All right, all right, let's get the thanks for those that are online. Click that.
I am, I am.
What?
Yeah.
Oh, it stopped it. How come they stopped them?
Well, they can hear us.
They can hear us.
All right, they can hear. Okay, so we're going to go into our actually this is the two two thirty, but we're going to move it to two o'clock discussion regarding Depot Drive Gary Meyer, Sean Bill Ross. We've got Austin City with us, Rick Stewart. Um, we want to go into a closed session.
Yes, to discuss the purchase and sale of property.
Motion to go into closed session to discuss the purchase and sale of property.
Thank you. I'll load the paper. Say aye. Aye, we're now in a close.
Great, thank you.
I was just stopping for some reason.
Jim Harvey, sir.
Okay, so I would entertain emotionally come out of closed session.
So moved.
Second, all of the favors there. All right, most curious, we're now out of closed session. We're at our actually three P M. We're a little ahead of schedule. The North Fork Bank damage. Gary?
Yes, sir.
John, Joe, Chad. And Greg, Greg Booth, Greg Booth. Okay, great. Welcome. So Commissioners, Greg, Greg contacted us. Chad, what's it been? Two, three weeks ago, maybe?
Maybe even a little bit more than that.
Maybe, yeah. Sorry for the slow response, Greg. We're trying to do the best we can. Greg lives up along the South Fork of the river as it comes out of a canyon, just east of Huntsville. And he lives on a portion of the river that is directly downstream from the diversion of Weaver Basins. Well, a lot of the irrigation canals, quite frankly, there's a couple of them that divert right there. Years ago, the county went in there and we helped Greg with the repair.
How long, how long ago?
That would have been eighty-three, eighty-four, the big year.
Before my time, okay. Yeah. Yeah, for all of our times, honestly, except Greg. And we, the county participated and did a bank repair along the South, South Fork of the, of the river right there. Well, that bank repair is kind of held and done very well until you fast forward to the year twenty twenty-three this year. We had some significant water and as a result of that, there was some scour that took place. And you can see from some of these pictures here that some of the, some of the riprap that was put in place was undermined. The, the very first picture there shows looking over a panel fence that Greg has out there and you can see the size of those rocks out there in the channel, stream channel. Some of those, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but those are three to four foot diameter boulders out there. And as the stream was raging through there, it undermined where they were sitting and they kind of just tumbled down into the channel. Couple things, it puts blockages in the channel and then it also exposes the banks to, to the erosion potential of the river. Should it ever get that high again? Hopefully we don't see flows like that in the near future, but we'll see what Mother Nature deals us, right? So Greg brought us up there, number one, to show us the, the damage that took place. And then he was curious asking if we would be willing to help in repairing or replacing those boulders back on the banks of the stream. And, 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 and when I went up there and initially looked at it, my initial assessment was, as I look at things, I'm thinking about the use of taxpayer money. And, and if, are there any county facilities, county property, anything, any, any county property up there that might be at risk? And at this point, I, I can honestly say I don't, I don't see any county facility at risk. However, I told Greg I would at least bring this up and let him help with the discussion from his side as to whether or not we participated in that. Is that unfair?
That sounds a little quick.
Okay. So. We have a cost estimate if we were to do it. You know what? I have not had time to circle back with Joe Hadley on that to see what it would be. There would be a few trees we'd have to remove to get in there and just the nature of the work commissioners, it requires a little bit of swing area in there with the equipment and, and really it's a couple of trees we'd have to remove and I think we could pretty much do the rest of the work pretty, pretty, pretty easily.
I wouldn't be surprised if it required more rock other than what's there possibly.
Possibly, yeah. All right. So my question is if we approve this, I've had a number of other requests along the South Fork that we come in and replace their bank. So how do we do this and then not do the others? Or tell the other people no.
Gary, that Gary brought that same thing up to me. And I completely and totally understand your position with that. My concern with that was the county helped us very much gratitude in, in eighty-three, eighty-four to put that in. I don't know that they, you, they, we have any liability to maintain that, to restore it. And potentially if the, these rocks roll back into the river and change the, the pattern of flow, it could potentially damage not only my property, but property downstream. And there's a couple of bridges downstream that potentially could be taken out on the, the ranch right below us and the Ed Rich's property down there. I mean, potentially. Sure. That's, that's, that's one of the arguments that I had.
Well, I totally understand that, but you're not the only one that has that issue. You're not the only one that was damaged. I've got neighbors that were, and back in the eighties and nineties, they used to run cats up from basically South Fork all the way up. And I've had people all, everybody east of me say, why won't the county come in and clear the brush out and do all that? Well, because we don't, we haven't done that. We don't have, and we, number one, you've got state controls now, but you didn't have controls back then. So I mean, I would like to find a way forward, but I'm not going to do it. And not, because now we just opened up the floodgates. If we're going to do it for one, we've got to be able to solve other problems. That's, that's where I'm at. If you've got an answer for that. I don't. Yeah, this is a, it's a tricky situation. And I, I think when I initially met Greg last week, I told him, I said, I hate to say this, Greg, but I don't think you're going to like the answer.
Well, you give me a fifty-fifty chance.
It's not that we don't want to, but it's, it's okay. If we do it for you, Greg.
Potential.
Potential. I mean, I've got a neighbor east of me, east of Jensen that, you know, Scott McFedders, he probably lost twenty feet of part of his bank that's probably twenty or twenty-five feet in depth. We're probably just at his, we're to restore him back to where he was. We're probably looking at a hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand, just for that sec, for a two hundred foot section.
In my defense, that's approximately what happened in eighty-three. We lost, we had access road going along the South Fork of the river and it took out twenty plus feet of it. And that the county came in and restored that and it's been very, very good until this year.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Was that a county road?
No, it was private access.
Private access. Trying to find a way to help you. Try to find a way to say yes.
I wish it would. Yeah, no, it wasn't. It's all private property.
So one thing that I've asked that we just, the treasury just came out with a couple of modifications in the ARPA funding last week. We're just start, starting to get our information on it that allowed for natural disasters or some type of road payment for ARPA funding to be used there. So that's a possible route. We had hoped that we had some state funding, but that's been non-existent. Or federal, which surprises me a little bit, but anyway. That's our, that's our sit, we will definitely check. If there's a way forward, we will.
I appreciate that very much and I understand your position. And who would I communicate or keep communications with?
Yeah. Okay, so we'll check into a couple of resources. I mean, I, we beat the heck out of the state. You know, every time I talk to leadership, it's like you've got to help us on a couple. And they're pleading poverty right now. So I just don't think we're going to have a lot of help from the state. A lot of, a lot of damage this spring. A lot of damage. And yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. That, that's, that says volumes right there, right? Everybody, everybody all along every corridor. Particularly in Weaver County received a lot of damage like similar to this, so. So there's a couple, there's that, that's one possibility, Greg. We're doing, I've asked him to look into our storm sewer. Yeah. Fund, whether that's a possibility or not, I, you know, we're just going to have to make sure we can legally do this if we go forward.
I appreciate that. If, if it came down to me doing it by myself, permitting, do I go through, you mentioned it, do I go through with the county?
No, you actually would get it through the state.
And I can discuss that with you later.
Absolutely. Their time. No, you're good. We're happy to, happy to put you in the right direction, get you started and help you however we can. And, and the state actually has been pretty good. They just gave my neighbor, you know, the Burley's. Yeah. They just gave them a permit to do that whole section under the bridge. Yeah. And they found, he actually found Roger, you know, Roger. He, he found it fairly easy to work with. Did they, did they do D W Q on that or? Uh, D W R, yeah, it's under their umbrella. And plug your ears, Commissioners, but technically speaking, it's probably cheaper and easier for you to do it privately than it is for us as a county. Weirdly enough, that might sound strange, but.
Not cheaper for me, but it's probably cheaper overall.
Permit costs. Yeah, sorry. I apologize. Let me retract that statement, Greg. That, that's not where I was going, but just permit. Costs itself. So, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Appreciate your time.
So, so we need to check into that and.
I'll keep contact with, with Gary.
Stay with Gary and. Yeah. Yeah.
And I want to thank you guys and I just wanted to tell my thanks to the staff. These guys particularly recently, but every time I've had contact with the committee, with the county staff people, whether it's for an easement evaluation or boundary concern, your people have just been spot on.
Granted, it's glad to hear. We think we got the best. We got the best in the state, if not the United States. So we got some dedicated people. They take care of the public.
They're professional.
Yeah. Well, we'll do what we can, Greg. I can't, I can't make any promises, but other than we will see what we can do.
Very much. Gary, yeah, thanks a lot.
Great. Thanks a lot.
I'll be in contact with you.
Please do. Yeah, yeah. And I meant to bring it back. Like, I blow through cards like crazy. On your way out, stop by our office there and they'll have them in the car.
Right in front of us. Oh, yeah. Thanks, guys.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, Greg. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming down, Greg.
Glad you're there. Gary, are they, no, do you know those cars?
Come up?
Yeah. Blocks, do they put those in the river now? Are they not heavy enough? Um, are you talking the, like a big Lego type looking block? They, sometimes they'll use those for kind of just to build up structurally along the bank. The, the challenge is you need to get those keyed in below to a proper distance below the flow line of the channel. Cause even with those there, they help, they help significantly.
I was thinking if the river's over here and he's over here, he could dig that down really deep. He set those, if he got it leveled, set those in there and stack on top of it.
Yeah.
Would never undercut again.
No, it would help a lot. The, as is always the case, pictures never quite do justice to the situation. When we were up there on Friday, all along that corridor of the bank of his channel, there's a lot of roots. And so you would be removing roots and trunks and, and you could argue that those roots and trunks help give him some protection, right? It just happened to be that what little bit of soil there was between the riprap and the existing roots just got undermined and washed away. And it just, those, those large rocks, they tumbled down into the channel. So. So, yeah, it, there's.
Lose them?
No, there's, some of them I think might have tumbled downstream a little ways.
I was thinking if he built a, if he built one of those walls, got it down far enough, he could use some of those rocks to stack behind that.
Yeah.
To give him a little more.
Works coming up, right? It, it's tough. I feel for all these folks. All in favor. All right. All right. Most curious. Thank you for those being online. We're now adjourned. Work session is complete. Thank you for.